Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong.
Very good. Sherilyn is, some of you may remember, is our former city clerk who is filling in for us this evening, so it's like old home week. Welcome Sherilyn.
Well, thank you.
And it feels good to say, Sherilyn, call the roll please.
Councilmembers Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Leaks May.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum, and Councilwoman Piana is out of town, and she has requested an excused absence, if there's no objection.
No, I will move to excuse her absence.
Is there support?
Support.
All right, so thank you for that. Moving on now to the approval of the agenda. What is council's pleasure on the agenda this evening?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Well, let me, I should have let it in.
Or not.
There is a resolution of condolences that I'd like to add as Presentation C.
I would then move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, if not, Sherilyn, would you call the roll please?
Councilmembers Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the agenda is adopted. So now moving on to presentations, our first presentation is from the Eight Mile Boulevard Association and their brand-new, well relatively-new, executive director who is joining us for the first time. Her predecessor is also in the room, so he will try not to critique your presentation.
He better not. Good evening, hi everybody. I'm Cindy Thomas, and I'm the new-ish executive director. I've been there three months now, but most of this work I'm going to report on I can't take credit for. I'm giving you the annual update of what, mostly what happened last year, and the man who can take most of the credit for is your new execu-, or new community and economic development director, and he's sitting in the back of the room, Mr. Jordan Twardy. But mostly, I'm here to both introduce myself and to thank you for your continued support. For those of you who don't know who we are or what we do, the Eight Mile Boulevard Association is a community development organization that is in charge of revitalization and the promotion of Eight Mile from 275 on the west to 94 on the east, so a mere 27 miles, no, you know, no big deal. We were founded in 1993 by the 13 communities and three counties that border Eight Mile along those 27 miles, and we're funded in part by dues that these communities pay, and those dues haven't been raised since 1993. And we're also funded by our Leadership Luncheon fundraising and grants. We try to prom-, oh, I'm supposed to flip the screen. Just tell me, you guys, if I don't flip. Flip. There we go. Flip. Okay. We try to promote Eight Mile as a seam between the communities rather than the dividing line that it's been seen as historically, and we initiate projects that have a tangible impact along the corridor, like facade improvement programs that try and improve the appearance of the block, infill, retail leasing to champion Eight Mile as a business destination, promote projects that revitalize the corridor. Our core programs are facade improvement, like I talked about, Hands on Eight Mile, which is an annual beautification and cleanup project, our Leadership Luncheon, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a second, like right now, our annual Leadership Luncheon, it's in its 18th year, it's coming up May 12th. Tickets are on sale now for a mere $75. Tickets are $650 for a table of 10, and it's about 30% of our annual budget, and it features a riveting panel discussion with Mayor Duncan, or Duggan of Detroit, and the executives of the three counties, Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb. And it'll be moderated this year by Hugh Perkins of Channel 2, and our theme this year is energy on Eight Mile, so it should be pretty good. Some of the impacts from last year are, we had our Metro, oh, I'm on the wrong, there we go, our Home Improvement Expo, which brought together a lot of vendors for people that were looking to renovate home, their homes and buildings, and included a job fair. We had the Congress for New Urbanism, looking at Eight Mile and Grashit as a particular problematic transportation intersection, addressing some of the problems and making recommendations for improved traffic flow. Let's see, what else, the adoption of the Eight Mile Master Plan, which kind of lays a blueprint for future development and investment, and probably the major contribution that the Eight Mile Boulevard made that's of particular interest to the city of Ferndale this year was we gave you your community and economic development director. Going forward, sorry, couldn't help it. Going forward, we're looking at another fundraiser in the fall, celebrating the 15th anniversary of the movie Eight Mile, and also celebrating the renovation of the historic Bel Air Theater. We're looking at a developers forum to bring together experienced and novice developers and showcase some of the vacant parcels and buildings that the municipalities have, and to start working on some safe crossings at the major intersections for pedestrians, and working with Ferndale on that CN rail crossing, the state fair redevelopment, and continuing our efforts with block clubs and community groups. Invite you to give us a call, or even better, let's go for a drive. Any questions?
Excellent. Any questions?
If I could through the chair, could you talk a little bit more about what your interaction is with block clubs and neighborhood work organizations?
Well, I know we have a number of block clubs that, what happened, oh, there's the sound, and community gardens and cleanup, I know they're very involved in the Hands on Eight Mile program. I'd like to get more involved, especially on the, as we look more to the safe crossings program, because I know they should be more involved in, well, crossing Eight Mile. It's kind of a dangerous street to cross, and I know the community groups would be probably a lot more interested in safe crossings.
Thanks.
Other question?
That wasn't a very good answer.
Well, welcome aboard. Welcome aboard, thanks for being, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. All right, thanks Cindy. Excellent. All right, moving on to our second presentation, which is our county commissioner, Helene Zack, here to update us on the happenings in Oakland County.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I want to show you, last week, I attended a special briefing on economic development in Oakland County, and I got this big packet of materials, and frankly, I learned that there are many new programs that I did not know about. I want to tell you a few things. I know we participate in the one-stop-shop and readiness, but Oakland County does, is going to provide some leadership training for businesspeople. This is a contributor, Why Businesses Fail, and this is a newer program. They have Entrepreneurship Alliance now, meetups so that you can meet other people. There's a whole host of financing, training to help you develop business in, throughout Oakland County. Also, jobs, and they're working on different skill, you know, more skill training throughout Oakland County. Presently, the summer jobs are open for positions such as parks and recreation, some summer internships, and if you're interested in the summer jobs, you go to the Oakland County website, www.oak.gov/jobs, and you can apply until February 20th, so it's a very quick competitive turnaround. I'll leave some hard copies as well. I learned that last year we purchased a van in our Veterans Services Department, and there is Veterans Transportation where you need to get to the South Oakland County Health Office, and that will drive you to the different medical facilities for veterans, like downtown and some other places, but it's an additional transportation service beyond our little local smart buses. If you're interested in scheduling pickup, and if you do have a wheelchair pickup, we can pick you up in your home. 248-858-0785, it's the Oakland County Veteran Affairs Department, and I was really glad to hear that we had another service for our veterans. I want to continue encouraging residents, if you do identify potholes or infrastructure problems, please text them to SEMCOG, because they're trying to track these different issues throughout our county, and you can send something to Leyton, L-A-Y-T-O-N, at SEMCOG, and you can also send information to fixmystate.org, and we're just trying to identify infrastructure issues. The Oakland County Board of Commissioners is going to be allocating some additional funding for a human trafficking program, and we've allocated out of our Special Projects Fund $50,000 to work on this issue, and that's a big deal for us to invest that money, and there is a study group that has been formed to say, how do we want to invest to address human trafficking further in our community? And we really do have a problem in Oakland County, you know, the numbers, it's frightening, so I'm glad that we're trying to do additional things for it. For those people that are low-income and could be eligible to receive, you know, their taxes, we will waive taxes, you know, until May 31st, and these are low-income residents that can't afford to pay upfront. If you need, if you want to do this, you need to contact the City Treasurer to apply for this, and this year, the extension, the waiver is later, we've said till May 31st instead of the end of April. I also want to let you know that we are working on more programs on GIS, on tax services to our local communities, our cities, villages, and township, so that it is going to be more readily available at no cost. We're also starting to offer remedial tax support to our local communities, and it makes sense because we're all connected, and we want to make sure that we're all safe and from cybersecurity issues and support one another. So I know that things are being sent out to the cities, and I like that we can access the expertise of Oakland County technology and bring it into our local communities. So I hope that as we need it here, that be, that you will access it as needed. That's it for this evening, any questions for me?
Excellent.
Yes?
Through the chair. Does the planning, the study group for the human trafficking group include the medical societies? Because Oakland County Medical Society and Michigan State Medical Society both are inching into programs here, because they're finding some of the best ways to identify human trafficking is in the emergency rooms and the urgent cares.
There's clearly involvement with the medical community part of it.
I know they're really interested in it, and I just want to make sure they're.
I will, there is, and I'll make sure there's enough representation, but again, it is a problem.
Oh, absolutely. And then my second is a request for the city manager, can we post the Veterans Transportation Affairs hotline on the website? Thanks.
That would be terrific. And just remind people, we do have an Oakland County Veteran Services Department, and we have veteran counselors there to help our veterans sort through their federal benefits, and we are able to secure about a million dollars' worth of benefits for our residents by having these veterans counselors. So it's really a wonderful department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks. And speaking of veterans, that's a good segue to the third item that I've added, asked to be added, and that is that Ferndale suffered a very sad loss last week. One of our residents, who was an active member of the Army, was killed in active duty. He was stationed in Fort Campbell, Kentucky, and he was killed while protecting the best friend of his fiancee, and it's a tragic event and a sad time for Ferndale, and so I've asked our council to put a resolution of condolences. His funeral was today, as a matter of fact, and the wake was at the Elks Club, and we'd like to add our condolences to his family, and let me read that for you now. Mayor Dave Coulter and the Ferndale City Council extends the city's condolences to the family of Sergeant Christopher Hoak. Sergeant Christopher Hoak, a lifelong Ferndale resident, served our country with honor as an Army sergeant with extensive awards and decorations, including Army Commendation and Good Conduct Medals, National Defense Service Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Combat Infantry's Badge, and Aerosault Badge. Sergeant Christopher Hoak lived and died as a hero, known for being the kind of person who put others first. His heroism was a hallmark of his personality and of his military career. He was a, Sergeant Hoak, it was a credit to his family as well as to this community and our country, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss. So I would like to have that entered into the record and sent to his family. Thank you very much. So with that, I would open up the next item of business to call to audience, and so this is your opportunity, if you're here, for the audience, and you'd like to address council on any, any topic that you would like, other than what's on the agenda, because we would allow you the opportunity to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda, but if there's anything that you would like to address council on, just come on up to the microphone and give us your name and your address, if you don't mind, and three minutes is yours.
Hi, I'm Emily Ober.
Hi Emily.
And I'm Alan Hale.
And we both live at 1903 Woodward Heights. So we, I'm here today because on a recent walk in our neighborhood, we had an issue with the sidewalks, and so one of the reasons that I moved to Ferndale, I've lived here a little over a year, was because of the walkability, and there's some new businesses opening up on Woodward Heights between the train tracks and Hilton Road, and we were walking the Farmfield Table, and it was very difficult to get there. The sidewalks were not in good shape, and there's actually not a sidewalk on that side of Woodward Heights, and I end up in the bike lane, and I got honked out by a truck. And so normally, like, I'm a very independent person, but when the sidewalks are like that, I like have to have someone with me.
Yeah, and if you need the visual, I brought two Google Map printouts, that kind of show where there's no sidewalk on the south side of Woodward Heights, and then between on Woodward Heights, Walcott Street, Paxton, and Inman, I think it's Consumers Energy, or I believe they're the gas company, they've torn out all the curb cuts and replaced it with kind of lumpy asphalt that the wheelchair can't get over.
All right.
And the most recent work with the train tracks, they like left a bunch of gravel, and I don't really get through gravel independently.
So a couple of things, we would appreciate that, and I'd ask you, hang on one sec, I'd ask you to give it to the clerk, if you have a pen, or she does, I, we'd also like your contact information, because we, I'd love to have someone from our staff contact you, I'm looking at this.
Actually, Matt right there will be the perfect person.
Oh, perfect. He's our, he's from our DPW department, and they would be able to handle that. But also, the other thing I would suggest, would just mention to you, is we had years ago, a, what was called the Disability Advisory Council, and it was a group of people with various disabilities who helped inform us of when things in the city were not friendly to people with different abilities, and it ceased to operate, not because we weren't interested in it, but because we didn't have enough participation. But we might even ask you, when we, when we talk to you, if that's something you would be interested in doing on and on, so just be prepared for that question.
Okay, well, I definitely would be willing to help. I do already sit on your Parks and Recreation Committee.
Excellent, so you've, excellent.
Emily and I know each other very well.
Great, so thank you Emily for coming and bringing that to our attention, we're very interested in hearing things just like that, and so if you want to give that to our city clerk, and then make sure we have your contact information, and apparently we must, because you're already on one of our commissions, we'll definitely get ahold of you. Thanks for coming and sharing that. Yes. All right, I see Cindy from the DDA coming up, so there must be something on tap.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to let you know about the latest retail event that we're going to be doing in downtown Ferndale. Small Business Saturday was very successful for all our small businesses, and we thought as a DDA, what else can we do to kind of keep the ball rolling and support our businesses? And particularly, this is kind of a slower time of year for retailers, so we really wanted to support them, do an event, and show that we do have a decent variety, a large variety of retail in downtown Ferndale. So we thought, well, what kind of events do you do for retailers? And somebody said, well, a sidewalk sale. Well, it's a little bit cold, it's February, it's a sidewalk sale. So we've decided to call it an indoor sidewalk sale. We have over 20 businesses participating, and you'll know who's participating, because they'll have this little sign in their window that says they're participating. It's this weekend, February 17th through 19th, they're offering all sorts of specials, discounts, buy one, get one frees. It's a really good time, because this time of year, besides business being slower, retailers are also turning over their inventory, getting rid of their winter stuff, to make room for spring and summer merchandise, so it's a good time to pick up some really great details at your favorite store, or maybe stores that you don't typically shop at, or you didn't know were here. So you can find all the updated information on our website and our Facebook page, Downtown Ferndale, and there's an event set up on our Facebook page, if you go to that event and say you're going, you'll find out the deals and all the fun things that are happening before everybody else does.
Cool.
So we just wanted to share that with everybody and encourage everybody to shop small, and next month, we're looking at having another event for another one of our business segments, kind of a health and wellness and green economy, so we'll be sharing that with you next month.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thanks Cindy. Anyone else like to address council this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Tim Brennan, 2605 Highland Street, and I'm here this evening to invite you all to the Ferndale Community Band Concert on February 26th. It's going to be at the Ferndale High School Auditorium at 3:00 PM. There is no charge for admission, but we do have a suggested donation of $5. The theme for this concert, this, our third concert of the season, is musical landscapes, real and imagined. The selections for this program will include Coat of Arms March by George Kenny, From the Delta by William Grant Still, who's an early 20th century African-American composer, a medley of Percy Granger songs, to include The Shepherd's Hay. medley of Percy Granger songs, to include The Shepherd's Hay, Six Dukes Went A-Fishin', and Early One Morning, Finlandia by Jean Sibelius, and two selections, both musicals, one from The Lion King, and The Blues Brothers really wasn't a musical, but it had a lot of great music in it. Swatched it the other night. The band is also planning on participating in the Red Cedars Band Festival in Ochamas, Michigan, on March 3rd. And we also would like to recognize three of our students this year. We have three high school students that participate with us regularly. Abby Cresean from Ferndale High School, Grant Bochrim from Ferndale High School, and Bryce Ungerman, who attends Henry Ford II High School in Utica School District. All these students recently participated in their local MSBOA district solo and ensemble festivals, and they all received superior ratings. So we're very fortunate to have them. So I just want to remind everyone once again that our concert is on February 26th, and we hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Tim, you gave me maybe your only copy of the poster.
Oh, no, there's plenty more.
Okay. This evening, anyway. But I would just remind residents that this is a very talented group of folks. It's well worth the small amount of money that they ask you to contribute. You have totally enjoyed them, and we'll make sure to help you promote.
Thank you very much.
Leave the poster. So thanks, Tim. And Tim's in the band and also a very talented musician. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Paul Collins, 634 East Breckenridge. I just had a quick question. I know with all the new projects going in, I just have noticed that there seems to be a trend going on towards a little bit of economic gentrification in the area, and I've noticed that some of our friends, longtime members of the community, have been forced to look other places to live because they're being priced out of areas of Ferndale. So I guess my question is, has there been any thought giving to some sort of projects, programs, helping those middle income and lower to find affordable housing, whether it being some sort of land bake, I mean, land bake, or some sort of changing the density and some sort of housing tract so they can make houses a little bit smaller and still make money on the projects? Or requiring new builds, apartment buildings to have a certain percentage that would be dedicated to mid or lower income tenants purchasing?
Right.
That's it.
And since you asked a specific question, although this is not a conversational part of the agenda, I will just share with you, and I'm looking at April and Jordan as well, that they have both been tasked with, we're very sensitive to the gentrification that is possible here, and with the rising values of homes and others, we want to maintain the feel of Ferndale and the opportunity for people of all income levels to live here. And so, yes, staff is investigating the various alternatives that we might have to help keep Ferndale an affordable place for folks, and so more to come.
If I may through the chair. I'd also just point out that under the public hearing, 6B is a great example of that, that the Planning Commission, the Ferndale Apartments, have indicated that that is a priced option for, you know, middleish income folks right in the downtown area. So the diversity of the housing stock in Ferndale is being addressed, and there's movement in that area. So I'd encourage you to stay and listen for that, if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on now to the next agenda item. We have two public hearings this evening. We'll go on to public hearing A, which is 1820 East Nine Mile Road, Special Land Use. And Jordan is going to introduce that item.
How you doing this evening? I'm going to, the screen went black here. I'm going to see if I can get it to come back up. Not going to redo the A&amp;BA presentation. All right, we're getting some spin. I'm just going to go ahead and go into it. I know you have the item in your packets. Usually Joe is here to rescue me from technical snafus with his absence tonight, but I'll just go through.
All right. See what we can do while you get started.
So, yes, I'll just run through. So this is a special land use application. I do believe, I think I saw there's Aaron in the audience today, so he'll be able to talk a little bit about the development. But essentially, what you're looking at is a concept called Detroit Fleet. It's to revive the old wing hang at Wanda and Nine Mile. So this is a really exciting food truck concept. It'll have full-service restaurant, it'll also have four food trucks. I don't want to steal any of Aaron's thunder. But essentially, what's in front of you today is a special land use, which is an approval that's required to allow this concept to go on that property. It does meet the various site plan requirements. For example, it meets the parking requirement, you know, 35 spaces are required, it's got 38. Things like, you know, ambient noise, per ordinance, any kind of outdoor noise has to stop at 10:00 PM, so that's covered. And there's also a really exciting B-to-B opportunity here with the items that are going to be featured at the restaurant, which is Kitty Corner from Chizano's. I know, and again, I don't want to steal too much of Aaron's thunder, but I know he's been talking to a lot of local Ferndale vendors to make sure that they're highlighted and they have that flavor going on at the fleet. I could certainly get into the technical nature of it, if you have any questions about the special land use. But I wanted to give Aaron a chance to talk a little bit about his business concept as well, and just introduce him to the Ferndale community.
Excellent. So Aaron, you want to come up and give us an overview of your concept? Pardon our technical issues.
Yep, none of them. My name's Aaron Ty. I'm a local food truck owner, delectable food truck, teamed up with about three different food trucks in the area to kind of have a stationary unit for us to park at. We will also have a coming and going type scenario with other trucks in the area to keep things fresh and interesting. We will have an indoor concept, a full bar, craft cocktails, craft beer, highlight Valentine, highlight local breweries, distilleries. Cool thing about it is, we've been able to, we started construction Friday afternoon. I'm sure you've already seen, Wing Hang is looking better already. We have been able to source a bunch of our contracting work out to Ferndale residents and companies in the area. So we're excited about that. We're hoping to be open for summer, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before we do that, and don't go too far, but this is actually a public hearing, so I need to, with that introduction, I'm going to open it up to the public, because this is technically a public hearing. And I'd like to know if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address council on this special land use permit this evening? Is anyone here to address this? And I'm hoping we can get the technical issues, because there's some really good pictures that it'd be fun for you to see. But yeah, come on up. If you'd like to address council on this special land use, come on up.
Jordan, it's ready for pictures.
There you go. Yeah, because we do have some cool concept pictures at least, which pictures tell a thousand words, but yes, sir.
Yeah, hi. Well, I just wanted to share my experience with food trucks and food truck courts, like what you're describing. I have some.
You mentioned your name, by the way.
Oh, yeah, Adam Schisler.
Thank you, Adam.
I have a couple of brothers that live down in Austin, Texas, and food trucks and food carts are a staple of what makes Austin a destination for a certain crowd of people. Portland, Oregon also has, they have a whole block dedicated to food trucks, and I think it would be an asset to Ferndale if this was allowed. A little nervous. Thank you.
No, you're doing great. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it. Good job. All it gets applause, even. There you go. Anyone else like to address council this evening on this item? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing, and then now I will open it up to council to ask your questions, comments, concerns.
I would just say, as the representative on the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was very supportive of this idea, not taking anything away from Wing Hang, but it's not been the most vibrant corner in Ferndale for quite some time. And this is similar to a concept that's up in Traverse City I've been to, and it was just wildly successful, and really a great, and the feedback from the Planning Commission, again, was very supportive. Others?
I will say that I really appreciate you wanting to bring this new project to Ferndale. And also, I love how it's further on the east side. I love to see more development going on there, and I'm glad that you are going to have that option available. Also, delectable. Do you have any affiliation with the Allenick family?
Yeah, she's my business partner.
Okay, because her mother, I believe Shirley Allenick, was a fantastic teacher at Ferndale School, so I just, even more support, because I love her to death.
Yeah, I would, I was going to raise two, but you've mentioned one of them. It's great to see this kind of development on the east side, because I think a lot of the redevelopment that's happening in Ferndale is going to continue to happen on East Nine Mile, and this is an exciting concept. And the second thing I'm excited about is that, I think it was my first year as mayor, maybe the second, but five or six years ago, we really did make a concerted effort to bring more food trucks to Ferndale. And it's not as simple as it sounded, and we weren't really successful. We worked on an ordinance that would bring some, and there's a competing interest with the downtown businesses, and I get this, the restaurants and bars that have been here for a long time, there's an issue of how you do that in a balanced way that's fair for everybody. And frankly, we just didn't hit the right balance of that. And so I think that the location is both helpful to help continue the redevelopment there, and also maybe far enough away from some of our downtown restaurants who may not want that kind of competition. And so I just think it's a great project in the right place at the right time, and I wish you much success. And it has its own parking.
And it has its own.
So, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Ferndale was the number one spot that, because you guys were so accepting the past three, four, or five years, we wanted to bring it to Ferndale, so.
I don't think we're going to get to pictures, it looks like, but trust us when we say the concept, because it's really unique. It's a restaurant and a food truck court, and it's, I think it's just going to bring a lot of life to that.
Be sure to let us know when the grand opening is.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, so a motion would be in order if there's no other questions or comments.
I'll move that city council approve the special land use request for 1820 East Nine Mile Road to permit a restaurant with outdoor seating with the findings and conditions as listed in the packet.
Support. Fought for that, but I'm going to give it to, support to Leaks May. So moved by Martin, supported by Leaks May. Any further comments or questions? And I guess, oh, no, he sat down, but I'm going to ask, and maybe you can answer it. But you mentioned Chizano Coffee, and I'll say that specifically because I know he reached out to me, he was excited about the concept, but wondering if there was sort of B-to-B opportunity there, and so just.
Excellent.
I'm going, yeah, that would be wonderful. Go. Okay. So final comments or questions? It's been moved and supported. Chairperson, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollocka.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Good luck. Moving on now to our second.
Oh, sorry about that, Mayor. For the folks at home, on the agenda on the city website, if you go to the agenda, the links.
Excellent. Thank you. So moving on now to our second public hearing, and that is on the Ferndale Apartments, 409 on 9, brownfield plan and reimbursement agreement. And Jordan, are you going to introduce that item?
That is an old picture. So the technical snafus continue, I'm afraid, I apologize. But I will introduce this item as well. So this is the 409 on 9 apartments. Essentially, what this is, 127 apartments with retail on the first floor. As well, this one is another one that's got parking on site for all the residential units, and they're also contributing 15 spaces to the city's parking supply on street on Nine Mile while preserving the bike lane. So this is a true mixed-use project. It's also a brownfield, as you know. So essentially, just to kind of, I'll break through some of the nuts and bolts of their brownfield, give a quick overview of sort of what a brownfield is, how that works, and then obviously, any questions from the public or council, of course, here to answer as well. And so are the developers as well. They have the development team, and their environmental consultant is here as well to answer any questions you may have. Quick summary, it's, it would be a $2.6 million reimbursement over a duration of 17 years, or up to 20 years, because the TIF is projected based on estimates in the growth of the value of the project, and I'll get into that in a little second. But it's also, it allows five years of tax capture following the project after the developers reimbursed to support a tool that we have called the Local Site Remediation Revolving Fund. Essentially, it's a revolving fund that allows us to support the environmental remediation of contaminated sites throughout the city of Ferndale through a tool called Tax Increment Financing, which I'll come back in a little bit. Now, that $2.6 million ask only represents about 14% of the total $16.1 million that is being invested in this project, so 86% of that's private capital. But you'll hear from the developers, they'll tell you how these dollars are critical to the project and how it sort of makes it happen. Over the duration of the TIF, it'll also generate, each year of the TIF where taxes are captured, the city brownfield authority receives an administrative fee for the amount, the staff costs of processing the application to ensure the tax capture is set up and to issue those payments. And over the life of the TIF, that'll be about $87,000 in support of the city. And at that, that last five years of capture will generate just over $530,000 for the revolving loan fund to help us support future projects. To give you a little sense of the history of the project, as it kind of went through the city processes before it came to your doorstep, it started at the Planning Commission in September of 2016 for a discussion, where there was a lot of back and forth with the developers, with staff and Planning Commission in terms of getting a little more value, or I'll say a lot more value, out of the plan that was there. The initial concept, basically, we added 30% more retail, we brought the green space to the street front. In addition, we also have them putting utilities under the green space, so as future retail demand occurs, we can add that space into the development. But also, it has the parking on site, it adds on-street. We also had it do creative things with massing to break up sort of the monotonous storefront. So a lot of work went into the design there. It was approved by Planning Commission on December 14th. It also went to the Appearance Review Committee for the DDA, which approved it near the end of 2016. After the holidays, even though the incentives policy was not in place, as you recall, that policy was put in place on the 23rd of January, the staff worked very closely with the committee and with the developers to make sure that its main principles were incorporated into the plan and the reimbursement agreement. The Incentives Committee gave it a courtesy review and a courtesy thumbs up on the 10th of January when they reviewed the project. And then the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority reviewed that shortly thereafter on January 12th and approved the project unanimously as well. So that's just the general gist of the history there. I would like to invite the developers to come up to kind of talk about the project. I don't want to steal any thunder. Let them kind of talk about their concept for the development, and as well as any technical questions, or the public as well.
Thank you.
Jordan, I think that he put it in, he's putting it in a folder right now if they want visuals.
Thank you.
Give him just a second.
I'll check, it was in already. I think they are old, but, yeah, this is the.
Other reverends.
This right here, I, no, see, they're old. Yep.
Let me just double check. He's got it, so I'm going to, he should have put it in the folder.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Mike Dowdell, Wolf River Development Company, and with me is Dale Inman, my partner, and Dave Van Heren, who's from Tri-Terra, who is our environmental consultant. Jordan did a good job of covering the numerical highlights of what we're up to. The concept here, the way we've approached this, is that we want to be, quote, reasonably priced. What we've observed is that throughout the metro area, and actually nationally, almost all the money in apartment development is going into, quote, luxury apartments. And that concerns us two ways. One, we don't think this is the right marketplace, but more importantly, we think there's going to be problems in the future in those kinds of buildings, because we've been in the apartment business cycle for a long time. It's all going into that kind of investment, and we think there's going to be an overbuild. So our plan is to build apartments that are a notch down, more moderately priced. We, as Jordan indicated, 127 apartments. There are 90 one-bedroom apartments, 31 two-bedroom apartments, and six studio apartments. Our target is two groups. One, the millennials, particularly people that are in their first or second job. We think this is a very attractive location because of the access of 75 and 696, as well as Woodward. And those people are very much attracted to what's going on in Ferndale throughout, and I think they would prefer to live here wherever their job is. So that's the direction we've taken with it. The, the. The, the interaction with the Planning Commission was very, very helpful to us, and unfortunately, we can't show you.
Oh, thank you.
On the screen up there.
We're trying.
But what we did was, in previous buildings that we've done, the cities wanted us to put the building up by the street, and so we started out that way, and very quickly learned the preference was different here in Ferndale, so we shoved the buildings back and put the green space up front, and that'll be access to the public. In addition, there will be a fenced dog run or dog park, exercise area. Now, that'll be limited to the tenants because of liability concerns, but the rest of the space is available, and there'd be park benches, picnic tables, that sort of thing, where it's available for anyone on the street. And we think that what the Planning Commission contributed to us really made it a better project because of that green space up front. We are parking about two-thirds of the cars under the building, and one-third will be out beyond the back of the building. We, currently, the space that we're talking about is about 4% permeable. Now, with our project, it'll be about 20% permeable, plus, we will have underground water storage, and the effect is that in a more severe rainfall event, currently, it all just sheets, sheet drains off the site. After we do that underground storage, that'll be held and metered out over six, seven, eight hours, which will do some relief for the city's storm sewer system. Four curb cuts will be eliminated out there on Nine Mile. The access will be on Paxton and Leland to park there. I think that's, I think that's most of an overview.
Yep.
Dale and David are much better with the numbers than I am, and between the three of us, we'll try to answer any questions you have.
So we, before we get to that, that was wonderful, this is a public hearing, so I would like to, I'll see if we can get to some pictures, just because a picture tells a thousand words, there's.
There you go.
There's one. All right. I would like to open this up to the public. So I'd like to open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the City Council on the Ferndale Apartments 409 on Nine Brownfield Plan and reimbursement agreement. Right, doesn't look like there is anyone going once, going twice? Yes, sir, come on up. Yeah.
When you guys are talking affordable for millennials, does that have a price range?
That's still being worked out. For a two-bedroom apartment, we're talking 1,500 to 1,600. For a one-bedroom, it'll be lower than that, and that's our attempt to bring it down as much as we can. If you look at the marketplace now, a similar apartment would be going for 2,000 or more. So we've brought it down quite a bit. It's not low-income housing.
Anyone else who would like to address council?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
Just a question regarding parking. How many spots are we talking about as far as, if I read correctly, 127? Is that what's in the?
I'll ask Jordan, our general rule is there has to be one space per unit, and I, so I think that's what we're talking about, but Jordan?
That's, that's correct. So they did receive from the Planning Commission a waiver on the retail spaces, but for every unit, in fact, I believe, gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you're slightly over one unit per apartment, so 130 spaces, 127 units.
Then I guess my question is, if there's 32, or approximately, we'll call it 30, two-bedroom apartments at this price point, it'd be fair to assume that most of the people renting those would have two cars? So therefore, it seems to me you're 30 short.
I appreciate that. I mean, our, our, what do you call them, not zoning, but our regulations require one, so we have to address that.
My only concern is, you know, now we're talking, you know, it's taking spots from Otis Supply because they're parking at Credit Union One, they're parking at, you know, the Fern Care Site, so I just, just asking a question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I don't know if, Jordan, if you want to speak to that or not.
Sure. The city ordinance, it does comply with that, and I know that they have worked out park share agreements with some of the neighboring properties, but one of the things that, that was definitely considered at the Planning Commission level, and they felt that not only did it comply with ordinance, but given the character of the area and the development, that they felt that that was satisfactory.
All right. Anyone else who would like to address council? If not, I've closed the public hearing portion, and now I would invite questions or comments of council. And Dan Martin, who is a representative on the Planning Commission, by the way.
Sure. I think this is probably a question for the developer. Now, you're making me a little nervous, because at the Planning Commission, you emphatically said the business plan was that the price point for these apartments were going to be in an area that which Ferndale, to be more affordable to get people into downtown Ferndale. What I heard you say today is we're still trying to figure that out. So what is the business strategy and the business plan? Could you clarify that for me, please?
Sure. We're still working through our financing, and that has an impact on it, and we've become ourselves concerned about the potential of interest rate increases in the near future. So, we haven't changed from what we thought we would be doing all along, but just for the purpose of this meeting, I wanted to be careful and not undersell something.
I understand. I'll get a little, the reason I say I'm getting nervous is I get, again, I'm not saying that you do this, in fact, I've talked to some folks in East Lansing where you did business, and they had some very nice things to say about you. So, I appreciate that. But where I get nervous is where it's, it's, it's much more sure at the Planning Commission, now we're wavering a little bit in front of City Council, what does the actual execution look like? Do you follow me?
I, I understand your question. We're just trying to be as transparent as we possibly can.
I understand, and I'm just trying to make the best decision with the best information I've got.
Sure, sure. We're confident the project's gonna go forward, and we're confident the rent is gonna be reasonable for this project relative to everything that's being built around here.
Was this addressed in the reimbursement agreement?
I'm sorry?
I was asking if the price point or the revenue was addressed in the reimbursing, reimbursement agreement. It's not addressed.
The, the price point was never made as a condition at the various levels of approval. It was, it was something that was discussed anecdotally, and it was discussed during the committees, but it was never made any condition of any approval, just to clarify on that.
Is there an example where we have made it a condition? I mean, it's legal to, right?
Not to my knowledge. There are certain, and Dan can certainly speak to the legality portions, but there are certain parameters under which we're allowed to do that via state law. Typically, it's, typically, it's whether you, if you offer density bonuses, if you have, if it's city property. And again, Dan, it can probably give additional clarification on that as well.
Well, through the chair, that would be an issue for discussion in negotiation as it relates to the reimbursement agreement. It's not embodied within the conditions that are set forth in the, in the current agreement. And, and there is, in looking at the agreement that's in council's agenda tonight, while there is the reference to the Local Site Remediation Revolving Fund for an additional five years, the, the, that language is not addressed in the reimbursement agreement. So to the extent council was going to proceed forward with the agreement before you, I would propose that there be a additional condition, that language regarding the additional five years for the local revolving reimbursement agreement be added to the reimbursement agreement. And then a second minor issue was, it appears in the final draft, the, the approval by the Ferndale Brownfield Redevelopment Authority was eliminated. They also review and approve it, and they would be a signatory and party to the agreement as well.
I'd just like to say, I'm not trying to throw a wrench at the last minute in this, I just want to make sure I know what we're buying, is all. So I just, I'm not, you've been very responsive, and I appreciate that, so I just, but I still have that question. So, that's all for now.
Other questions or comments?
I, so I was at the Planning Commission last year when you first approached them with the plan. You had a very cookie-cutter plan that you wanted to plop down on that, that spot, and you got an earful that day, I know that. And I appreciate the fact that you went back to the drawing board, you took several of the recommendations that the Planning Commission recommended, and then came back to the Planning Commission with this proposal. I still have some issues with this, this plan. I'm still not comfortable with the fact that it isn't retail across the whole front, that it's, it's slightly walkability. And I know there was some concern that you didn't believe that there's market, that there's need for retail at that end, and my response is, the reason you don't have people walking at that end is because you have nothing for them to walk to or from. If you put it there, we'll have walkability, you will create that. So my concern is, there's a lot of green space. I would have liked to have seen more of this project brought up to the sidewalk, Zero Line, I think it's called. So I have the issue, I think, Jordan, you and I talked earlier today, and you had mentioned that within the green space that is now developed, you are putting utilities in place so that at a future time, you will be able to build that up for the first floor. Is, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
That was definitely the conversation that was had, yes. So that was one thing we talked about, in terms of a compromise position to say, you know, obviously, we have our goals with the master plan, and, and you look at market conditions, and you look at the vision where we're trying to take the city. It was felt at the time that Planning Commission looked at it, was that was a good compromise to say, well, that whole first floor is a minimum of 12 feet, which is tall enough to do retail. And so, without foisting the burden of sort of inducing demand on this one project, knowing that it, in its current form, will also induce a degree of demand, you, you give yourself that future flexibility. So you have the green space now, it's, it's similar that you might do, like, sort of a completely different topic, like you might do in a parking structure, where certain areas are parked, and that as demand comes, you can reprogram that space into retail or other uses. So we took that same philosophy here.
Okay. So, 150 years from now, those green spaces may actually no longer exist, and you may have retail stores. I just want to get that clear.
Yeah. What we agreed to do was to stub in the utilities and plant it so that if in the future, whatever the timeframe was, there was a strong demand for the retail, then it could be done. It wouldn't, it wasn't precluded.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And, and just on that point, so, and then there would be an incentive for you to do that because there would be additional profitability, but obviously, that would potentially be, because we can't go back in time and tell you to do that, but there would be an incentive for you to do that just financially, correct?
Sure. This is a profit-making venture, that's for sure.
Right, right.
The overall idea here was, we consulted with retail leasing people.
Yeah.
And the message we got was, there wasn't the demand now, and part of the strong message we got in the Planning Commission was Ferndale was not looking for national change. What they said to us a number of times, we don't want to be Royal Oak, and that affects...
Close yours, Royal Oak, but, yeah.
That's what we said.
I agree. We say it a lot, and I, I agree.
Yeah. And we listened to that, and that changes who you might bring into that space, it's gonna be half, have to be locally grown retail space. And we respect, we've, we've tried to listen, and I hope you saw that, we've tried to listen to all the feedback. And in, based upon what they said to us, if we built that space, it looked to us about, this is approximate, about an $800,000 loss for us, which sunk the project.
No, I, and I appreciate that. As we continue to go through these brownfields as they come to us, I become more and more educated on the value of them and what we are and aren't able to do. I will say that I have a very hard time, in essence, giving $2.6 million to a project where a lot of the ideas and suggestions when it comes to materials, when it comes to design, that is being offered at the Planning Commission, when those ideas and suggestions aren't taken more seriously. Not saying that you haven't, because you have, I, but I just want to, I need to get that out there to the public. On Councilman Martin's point, I now have an issue with this idea, and you threw the number out there, $1,500 for a one-bedroom apartment.
Two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom. What would a one-bedroom be?
More in the range, 1,200.
Houses on my street are going for about $1,100 to $1,200 for a month, and that's a whole house, and in some cases, has a garage. So I'm not sure, and, and a lot of millennials can't afford that today, so I'm not sure I can, I can agree that 1,200 to 1,500 is a moderately priced apartment for a millennial, for a 30-something, probably, but not for a 20-something. Yeah, if you want to comment.
We've done extensive surveys of what's going on, and the millennials are renting in Royal Oak and in Midtown 400 or more higher than what we're asking, and all of those buildings, both in Royal Oak, the newer buildings with the newer amenities, and in Midtown, are 100% leased. So, we've never represented this as being low-income housing or anything like that. We wanted to be a contrast to what's going on in the marketplace now, and we are way below in all of those buildings. We've had the market surveys done, we've had the renting experts with us, they're all 100% leased with waiting spaces.
If I may, through the chair, two things, and I don't want to mean that I suggested that you ever represented it as low-income, you didn't, and you're absolutely correct. Are those market studies something you'd be willing to share with us?
Sure.
I wanted to, through the chair, is the only target group the millennials?
In our opinion, the other group that will likely rent from us will be baby boomers that have something in Florida and want to spend a few months in the summer up here and at this price range. You can go up to Birmingham, and the same people who have obviously more income are paying $4,500 a month to take an apartment like this and live in it part of the year.
But if I, if I may say, with all due respect, I mean, you've got some great amenities to this, this isn't a Birmingham apartment building?
No.
Okay.
No. If, we couldn't, we couldn't afford the project or the rents if we were doing that.
No, agreed, and that's why I don't think it's, Birmingham's necessarily a fair comparison.
No, I, I was trying to address the notion of, is there a market?
Okay. Thanks.
I would like to mention that I actually sit on that incentives committee, and one of the, kind of a common theme when we kind of discuss what we'd like to see here is affordable housing. And I'm looking at this, and I don't know how affordable it is, so I'd be interested to see the, the plan or the market plan that you proposed, because I, I just don't know if this is, like, like Councilman Martin stated, this appears to be more of the housing rents than the apartment rents.
I think what we believe is the, the millennials, the person that has the first or second job and that sort of thing, a lot of them don't want houses. They want quick and easy, and they want someone else taking care of all the problems. They don't want to cut the grass and plow the snow and all that kind of stuff. And what we've targeted is people like that.
Are these rents, are they still under review with you?
Once we're all done with everything, then we know what we have to get, and so it's part of that. And I would say emphatically, because what we're talking about here is not so much Planning Commission issues, but the brownfield issues, and I can tell you, without the brownfield, we can't do it.
I hear you, but I, through the chair, if I may.
Yeah.
I, I think what you're hearing, this council and this, is given the city direction, and I know the city believes in this, that we're very passionate about having housing in stock at all levels, and the prices have gone up in Ferndale, you're absolutely right. And the prices have gone up in Ferndale, you're absolutely right, whoever had mentioned that earlier. So I think it's incumbent, incumbent on us to, to make sure that all housing needs are being addressed, addressed with what little property we have to develop is left. And that's, I think that's the passion behind some of these questions. Again, we're really grateful you're looking at Ferndale. I think that's the only piece that, left for me anyway, that makes me uneasy.
A point of clarification too, to some process, one of the things that, we actually started this incentive policy in the middle of their application, if you will. We also actually, moving forward, our, our staff is working right now on a workshop with city councils to start identifying what we mean by affordable housing and what that looks like as we go through future projects. So I do want to clarify that, again, as they stated that this conversation with this development, whenever was classified as affordable, if you will, and then just to know that this, that during this process, it, it became clear that we do have to figure out, moving forward, what does that mean for us and what does that look like for future development. So I just want to make sure that that doesn't get lost in the shuffle as we have the conversation regarding this particular development.
Which, which does speak to, and we talked earlier about how we are reviewing what our options are around moderate to affordable housing, because those terms get tossed around a lot. But there's no, there's no, you know, clear definition and it, it sort of depends on how communities want to handle that and what, don't have one. And so, we're not giving really clear direction to developers that come because we don't have a, and I guess it speaks to the, to the fact that sooner rather than later, we really do have to have the conversation before the next major development comes down the road of what we mean by that and what we're interested in.
And as well, I just want to navigate a little bit further that for, as far as this development is now, for them to go, it's, they can't just flip and suddenly make it affordable housing in this particular instance. So I just, as part of the conversation, I want to make sure we're clear on that.
But Mike, you, you made a point just a minute ago and I, I want you to expand on it, that, but not for this brownfield credit that this project couldn't happen. And that is the, the purpose of a brownfield credit in the first place. And so, I don't know if we have your pro forma or not, but could you speak to, with a little bit more detail to, to how, what, how you think this brownfield credit is critical to the development of the project? Or maybe that's your, yeah?
Yeah, you do have our pro forma, Dale Edman with Wolf River Development.
We do, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and if you...
It's an eye chart, but we have it.
So give me the exact summary of the pro forma, which maybe my eyes weren't good enough to read, okay?
Well, there's, there's a lot to a pro forma.
Right.
And it is a pro forma, it's, it's an estimate, it's not the, but the bottom line is...
Yeah.
We'll just get to the bottom line and I think the best way to evaluate it is to look at probably the third year in operation of the building. The first year, you're leasing it up, second year, it's stabilizing, probably the best time to look at it is the third year. And without the brownfield, the project will return about $100,000 in distribution after paying the mortgage, paying the operating expenses, and that's on a $3.3 million investment. So with the brownfield, it goes up to $275,000. And that's about a 7% return. So without the brownfield, it's about a 3% return.
Right.
So who would invest their money, take two years of their time to build the project and make 3% on their money? And the hope is, is that as time goes over, you pay off the mortgage, that you can do better than that 7% with the brownfield. If that's all you could do, you probably wouldn't invest in it. But if you have the hope that as time goes on, you'll pay down the mortgage, the rents will increase a little bit, you'll get a little more efficiency with your net operating expenses, that you can do a little better than that. But I don't think anybody here would invest 3%, that kind of money for a 3% return with that level of effort and time. And so, that's the bottom line of the brownfield.
If, if I may, through the chair, so if you know your bottom line and you know $1,500 for a two-bedroom, what did you build this model off of for a one-bedroom rental?
Actually, when Mike quoted the $1,500, that was probably the best two-bedroom apartment on the front with all of the largest square footages. And what we're basing it on is $1,175 for the one-bedroom. And we're assuming that the average between the largest two-bedrooms and the smallest two-bedrooms, some in the front on Nine Mile will get more rent and if they have a second parking space. But basically, the fundamental two-bedroom will be $1,375 a month when you average that out.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I was going to say, all in all, I appreciate it creating some jobs on construction and otherwise, so I appreciate that. I appreciate it creating some jobs.
Yes. I would say for diversity of housing stock, in our investigation, Ferndale House, our competitor down the, on the other side of Woodward, is, it's going to be the first apartment, new apartment built in many years and will be the second, and maybe we can catch up with them if everything goes. But, so that is a diversity of stock. Brand-new apartments in a urban downtown area is, I, we feel is a major benefit as far as diversity of the stock. The stuff that, the apartments that are here, I think many of them are well-maintained, they're 100% occupied, you call on one, they're, they're, they're full, they fill up. Oh, sorry, if you're not going to take it today, I'm going to rent it to somebody else. But they're 50 years old and I think we would be helping the Ferndale apartment stock if we were able to build a new apartment.
I don't disagree with that, and I, through the chair, and I, that's not lost on me. For purposes of discussion, I'll move that the city council approve the plan dated December 15th, 2016, revise February 8th, 2017 with the terms of the BRA approval to address a typo in reimbursement, is that right? Okay, in reimbursement agreement dated February 8th, 2017, based on the terms and the findings and conditions that are in the packet.
And do you want to add the points that, that Dan made about the five-year revolving fund needs to be added? Is this the appropriate time to do that, Dan, to add it to the reimbursement agreement?
Well, Your Honor, through the chair, certainly, if, if council proceeds forward, I would request that you have two contingencies that add to the, the reimbursement agreement, the reference that Jordan made, that the concept as reflected in the brownfield plan, that there be an additional five years of the local site remediation revolving loan fund be incorporated into the reimbursement agreement. It's not in there. It's, it is part of the brownfield plan, but it, the version that I'm looking at here, it's not in. And then secondly, the second point was that it also, a signatory to the agreement should be the Ferndale Brownfield authority.
And do you folks have any issue with either of those two points? Is that oversight or is there...
I think it's in there.
Could be we have an outdated copy or something.
No, the, the way it was put together, the, the reimbursement agreement refers back to the plan, which incorporates the five-year reimbursement period. But in, in terms of being better safe than sorry, it's certainly not going to hurt to add that language explicitly. But it was the opinion of staff that the way the reimbursement agreement was structured, it covered that five-year, because it referred back to the plan, it's in there.
All right, I'd like to add those two contingencies to my motion. Did you get that, Sherilyn, because I can't repeat it.
Yes. All right. Is there a support? So it's been moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Now, further comments, questions, comments?
I just want to say, I, over the last year to two years, Ferndale has seen a lot of new development, people very interested in, in coming on, coming into Ferndale and developing available, available space, which we don't have much of. And, and I apologize that you, at this point, have kind of become, in, in my opinion, kind of a guinea pig of, of what we're trying to accomplish now with, with brownfields. Two years ago, we were hoping that development would come in and we were willing to easily give away, you know, invest, you know, millions of dollars into new development. Now that we're one of the hottest communities to develop in, it's not as easy for me to give $2.6 million to a project that might not completely meet the community's needs. I'm not saying that your project doesn't meet the needs, I'm just saying that I'm going to be more cautious in the future about what I do support in regards to brownfields.
Fair enough. And, and I would also say, and I know you know this, Councilman Pollica, but that's why we put the incentives committee together, that, that Councilwoman Leaks May served on, because we knew that, that incentives need to be different, they need to be tighter, stricter going forward. But as we also confirmed, there's still a necessary tool in our toolbag to make sure that major projects like this can happen, because it is still easier today to go to a green field out in Lake Orion than it is to build and, and redevelop an older community like Ferndale. And these are the incentives that allow Ferndale to, to, to attract these kinds of developments. It is the anti-sprawl tool that we still have. And we've tightened them up and I don't, you know, and I'm, I, I hear what you're saying, we can continue to, to look at those, to make sure that we're offering the right amount and for the right length of time and all of those things. But I appreciate that this one, even though it didn't have to, did, did meet our new policy. And in terms of the need also, we sometimes forget about this, but we talked about it at the DDA recently, we do still have a, a need, a desire for more people to live and work in our central business district and to help create that foot traffic and that walkability that you're talking about. And so, I think this also meets that as well, so I would just make those comments as well.
I'd like to add too, just in looking at the whole process, start to finish, and I know this is on the, the radar of our economic development folks, but we really needed to be clear upfront about what our design expectations are.
Absolutely.
And, and the economic development folks, I know, and the Planning Commission are going to work together to bring forward a, a design policy, because I think a lot of the initial back and forth could have been addressed if we'd been clearer about design expectations, you know? Everybody comes in and mentions Royal Oak and we end up jumping on their throat. You know, I mean, there's things that we can tell you and guide you ahead of time that we can do better at, and I think a, a front policy for that will be a, a welcome addition to the process.
Agreed.
Nothing against Royal Oak?
Ferndale North. All right, any other comments, questions?
Just a side comment, I, you know, I work at Ford Motor Company and I make a pretty decent salary and I sure would love to be able to afford a $1,500 apartment, because I can't today.
Which, again, does get to the issue of, we need to define in the city for ourselves and for developers, what is affordable, what is moderate, what is low-income and how much of each of those do we want? And we really do need to...
And, and just to, for council scheduling, we are, it's either going to be a work session at the February meeting, we're in the first one in March. So we're, we're very close, it's coming, we're working on the outline for it right now.
Excellent. Anything else? We do have a motion and a support, so if there's no further comments or questions...
Oh, I have one more comment. I do want that market study, please.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, please.
All right. Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollica? Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that agreement is adopted. Thank you, men, thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that council considers routine unless council removes something from the consent agenda. Let me read that now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held January 23rd, 2017. Item B is the approval of the reappointments of Dennis Augustin and John Hardy to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term ending 12/31/2019. Item C is the approval of the trade-in of the Sig Sauer P220 firearms and outdated inventory in the armory for a credit of $27,760 and the purchase of new Sig Sauer P320s, including holsters and magazine pouches for a, a total of $26,757 from Acme Sports Inc., leaving a credit of $1,003 in that account. Item D is the approval of a special event permit for the sixth annual Get Real Movie Night on July 20th, August 17th, and September 21st of this year. Item E is the approval of a special event permit for the 10th Avenue, 10th Annual Fido Does Ferndale on October 19th, 2017. Item F is the approval of a special event permit for the 15th Annual Holiday Ice Festival on December 9th of this year. Item G is the approval of a special event permit for the 3rd Annual Art at City Hall on Saturday, May 13th of this year. Item H is the approval of a special event permit for the 99th Annual Memorial Day Parade to be held on Monday, May 29th of this year. Item I is the approval of the Firehouse Alerting System quote by DA Central in the amount of $11,289.17. Item J is the approval of the phone system software update as submitted by the Assistant City Manager. Item K, renewal of the Traffic Improvement Association Community Membership as submitted by our DPW Director. And finally, item L is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
By Pollica, supported by Leaks May. Now, any discussion on the consent agenda, either by council or anyone here in the audience? All right, seeing none, Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda, item A is a confirmation and approval of city policies addressing discrimination against immigrants. And I will just introduce this item by saying that, given recent events in our country and issues that have arisen in various cities and states across the country, we, as a council, asked our staff to look into the current city policies and procedures that currently exist in the city to make sure that they were welcoming to people of immigrant status. We have a human rights ordinance in this community that addresses a number of variables, including sexual orientation and height and weight and all of the other non-discrimination things. But, but as all of our policies relate to immigrant status, our desire was to make sure that, that Ferndale was a welcoming city that did not exhibit bias against people based on their immigrant status. And so, we asked staff to review that and they have. And April, do you want to tell us what you've discovered and what you're recommending?
Absolutely. In the process, what I did discover was that the police department was already on this. They started in the beginning of the year in Janu, it had actually been prior to that redoing all of their policies and procedures, if you will. And what I found first and foremost was they had already amended their fair and unbiased policing policy to include ensuring that immigration, your immigration status was not a factor in how they police. So that was the first thing we looked at and in talking to city council, we still wanted something that addressed all of the other employees that we have that aren't in the police department. So when we did look at that, we did, you'll see in your packet in updated policy, that while we have a human rights ordinance and we follow that internally, we actually didn't formalize a policy, if you will, on ensuring that we treat all of our residents, visitors with the same respect. And so, we did address and adjust a new policy, if you will, for our, all of our other employees as well, that would require the continuation of what we're already doing, but non-discriminating for any service delivery or supporting, supporting services that we need to provide our residents or visitors, including their immigration status. And so, we went a little further even in that, in saying that we will not ask for immigration status, depending on a need-to-know, right-to-know basis, which would typically be in any federal programming or in employment when it's required by law to ask for that, I know inform. But other than that, it's our opinion that we want to provide and support all services to our residents and visitors, no matter what their status is. So we have that and it's not typical, actually, for city council to approve policy, but we thought in this instance, it was important for, for you guys to take a look at that and to confirm and approve both the police department and all other city policies that in, will really step up our game as it relates to making sure we support and assist anybody, no matter what their status is, including immigration.
So, so on that, I, I would ask Captain Palazzolo, I, we, I, we were all very pleasantly proud that you had proactively, you and the department had proactively addressed this, at least from a policing perspective. So could you just talk a little bit about what that policy is and, and how that came about?
Sure. Over the course of the last year, we revamped 100% all of our policies and procedures, which hadn't really been looked at for the last 15 to 20 years. So in, in doing that, we, we looked at all these other areas that were not addressed. We adopted and looked at model policies through MMRMA, we looked at the International Association of Police, we looked at other proactive and police departments that were well-respected, people that we knew through our relationships. So we looked at a big pool in this, well, this is one of the policies that we wanted to... to implement. And if you had a chance to look through it, it kind of goes over all the, the things that we all do and we've been doing, but we wanted to be able to put something in, in the policies and kind of spell that out so it's crystal clear for everybody exactly what our folks are out there doing. We don't stop people because any of these things, race, national origin, ethnic background, immigration status, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, marital status, economic status, individuals with disabilities, age, height, weight, religion, all the things that are, that we kind of think of as, you're not allowed to stop somebody for just because they are doing one thing. There's got to be a combination suspicion of activity, or they fit the description of a crime that just happened, or it could just be speeding or breaking some other law. But what's interesting with this and I like about this policy is it not only puts in there employee responsibilities where if you see somebody doing something wrong, you are bound by duty to stop them immediately and then to report that to your, to your supervisor. It's got mechanisms in there for the supervisor's responsibility if it's reported to them, what actions they take. There's also an audit, so every supervisor will randomly pick different videos of traffic stops and people stopped, I think it's two stops per month, and they do that quarterly. So that would be eight random stops per quarter. Each supervisor will submit a report to myself. I'll review that report and then I'll forward that on to the chief and I'm sure it'll be forwarded, forwarded on to council. What we're seeing so far is our people are doing a lot of good stuff. We are finding little minor inconsistencies. Here's an example. A young officer stopped somebody because the license plate is somewhat unreadable. You could look at that either way. To us, we don't think that's, we want something a little bit more than that. So after that, all these things are reported, we compile it. If the supervisor finds that there's an issue, they immediately address it. We use it as a training tool. If it's something a little bit further, it goes to our internal division and we'll deal with it appropriately.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there any questions on the policy?
Comment, not a question.
Yes, please.
So I appreciate all the controls, I appreciate the policy. I was one of the people that brought this up and I appreciate extending it to city hall employees, but I want to be really, really clear that asking for this to come to council and reporting it in the current political environment is not suggesting our police force in any way is doing anything wrong. Talking about it here is the message to the people in the community of might be undocumented, maybe here illegally, but in the city of Ferndale, there is no reason not to report if you are a victim of a crime. You should have no fear to come to our police department and report that. It's crucially important. Nor approach any city employee about everything and worry because of your status, you'll be discriminated against or not listened to or sent away somewhere. So I just, I want to be perfectly clear that the message of this is to the, the people out in the community, not to suggest our police force is doing anything wrong, because I don't believe they are, and, but to say in Ferndale, you are safe and you are welcome to come to the police and city services and say that in a very public way.
We like to spell out to our folks exactly what we expect of them so they know what to do. And when we have it on paper for everybody to see, we, we think we've done that. There was a time where our policies and procedures, we held to our, you know, held to ourselves because we're, you know, going to give away some tactic or something by releasing those. Our policies, a majority of them, are meant to put in place and anybody can take a look at them. If there was something hidden in here for a tactic or something that might jeopardize an officer's safety, those are very far and few between. That's why when we were asked by council on my thoughts on releasing these policies, I had absolutely no problem. The chief and I were both 100%, you know, hey, let's release it and put it out there for everybody to see.
Thank you. And by the way, speaking of the chief, I mean, I didn't mean to not call on you. I know Captain Pelazolo has sort of advising the policies, but our police chief is obviously, okay, was very supportive of it and, yeah, so just doing the rank thing there. Okay. Thank you, Captain. All right, so other comments or questions of council?
I move that we confirm and approve Article 55, fair and impartial policing in the city immigration status policy.
Support.
The move by Leaks May is supported by Martin. All right, now comments, questions?
I just want to add something to Councilman Martin's comment, that if at any point a resident, a visitor to the city feels like they have been harassed by an employee or by the police, to please seek leadership within that department or seek one of us. We want to know if that happens. You should never be afraid to communicate. If you have to come all the way up to, you know, city council to have that conversation, that's what we're here for.
That's absolutely correct. I want to add this. When we started investigating this and when I started doing some research, these, these terms like welcoming city and others get tossed around, there's really not a legal hard and fast definition. These, these kinds of policies against bias can be interpreted in communities in different ways. But I just want to be clear that we wanted to go the, the full extent with real credible policies and ordinances that made a real difference for the immigrants in our community. And I believe this makes us a welcoming city. I, I hope that's the perception. There is an organization, welcomingcities.org or something, that, that might make it official and we're researching whether or not that's beneficial for us to join. But the intent, as Councilman Martin said, is not directed at our police because I think they're doing the right thing or even our residents, but to just make sure that anyone here knows that this is a, a, a city that you're welcome in, that you're safe in, and that you're safe to report crimes either against you or other crimes that you see without fear that we're going to challenge you on, on your immigration status. And so I wanted to clear us a welcoming city by these policies and we'll see if that officially meets the criteria of the various organizations. Other comments or questions?
No, I'm just, I'm not surprised that we're doing this. So it's one of the things I love about this community.
Anyone in the audience, by the way, I did say we'd give people an opportunity to do a dress council on issues as they come up, but if there's anyone here that wanted to address on this issue. All right, then Sherilyn, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Martin-
Yes.
Polica-
Yes.
Leaks May-
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. And then our second regular agenda item is the consideration of the sale of 205 and 235 Livernoy. And Jordan, are you going to introduce that item?
This time, we are not going to leave it to the network.
This time what?
We're not leaving it to the network. I've got a flash drive. So you can see the pictures so we can-
Thank you.
And here we go. All right, so this is again, an item to consider the sale of some city-owned property on Livernoy. And for reference, this is just off of Eight Mile Road, probably about a block or two off of the, of the corridor there. And so essentially what you have before you, and Mr. Motley is in the audience today. So essentially, this sale of property is going to be contingent, there's a reverter clause in the purchase agreement tied to a development proposal that Mr. Motley put before us called Eight North. So mixed-use housing project on the Livernoy corridor. And you'll see we had the property appraised and you'll see that the appraisal total was about 150,000. The offer is 106,000, so it's not what the appraisal is. But we'll get into a little bit of the project context to kind of explain sort of why that is. So essentially, for reasons that were not to the purchaser, essentially there was some litigation about the parcels that had to be ironed out. Meanwhile, the, the proposed developer kept continuing to invest money to keep the option on the property, to keep the project alive. But also it's, it's meeting a lot of master plan goals, bringing housing, bringing development, bringing jobs, bringing residents to the Livernoy corridor. So there's sort of some trade-offs for council to consider there with the offer. Essentially, CED has evaluated the Eight North project, we're generally supportive. We find it very consistent with the master plan update of 2016, 17. And again, we put that, we're, you know, we're confident in working with this proposal. That's why we put the reverter clause in there. And just to scroll through to give you a general look of that project, bear with me, I'll get you to the pictures here. And we can of course talk about any details, but this is the Eight North concept here. And I'll just kind of scroll slowly through. You could see sort of the aerial, you could see it's three buildings with green space. If you can see the little mouse hand there, you see the parkings in the rear, green space in the front, retail the first floor, and then the, the front-looking facade right there with the residential units as well. And then you could see, this will have to go for a plan unit development approvals. So there's, you know, sort of more steps in the journey, but it would start with the property sale. So with that, if you have any questions, that's the general context there.
And is there anything that, that you would like to add at this point, just in terms of introduction or, I mean, you've been here before, a long time ago, so we appreciate your continued interest.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, council residents. My name is Paul Motley. I'm the managing partner for Nexus Capital. I know some of you are, are, are new, but if you recall, we came before council as a discussion item in 2015.
Yeah.
We also had come before planning prior to that in 2015. Obviously, you know, as, as Jordan said, there was a matter of litigation. Prior to that, we were on the fast track, you know, in addition to the, the capital that has been invested to maintain site control of the centerpiece. There are three contiguous parcels that are currently residential. The two non-contiguous parcels are the parcels in question that are owned by, that are owned by the city.
Right.
There's a private parcel that I have maintained and the, the contract has expired four times and every time I've gone to extend the project, you know, extend the, the contract, the seller has increased the price. So, you know, what was one price has now increased by about 125%. But, you know, I've, you know, I believe that this is a project that's worth doing, which is why, you know, I continue to, to invest the capital. As Jordan said, you know, it's definitely, it's a different situation, obviously, from the, the items that you've heard this evening with respect to 409, nine, is it 409 on nine?
Yes.
That's, you know, it's, that's downtown. This is, you know, obviously a different sector. This is what we hope to be the, the gateway into Ferndale from, from off of the, the Livernoy corridor. But at the time, like I said, we were on the fast track. I had investment partners who were very much interested, but, you know, this thing stayed in litigation for almost a year. And, you know, investment money does not sit still. So the, the purpose of coming before you today is we still want to do the project, we still want to regain some of the momentum that has been lost, but, you know, everything starts with site control. Because everything that, all of the investors and investment partners that I had said, I love the idea, we understand there's a pent-up demand, it's a great opportunity, call us when you have site control. So, you know, you know, that's in a nutshell, you know, what we're here for.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's what I would hope that, that council would consider this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And then, and then Dan Chris, if you would just briefly, I don't think all of us were on council when this first came. So could you just briefly give council and the public a summary of what the legal issues were and what was entailed in that?
Your honor, as I think you will recall, there was a issue by a couple of individuals who claimed an interest in the property. So there was a quiet title action that was initiated against the city and the city had to defend that and assert that its ownership and title to the property was superior to the challenge that was based on a number of different theories and ultimately the circuit court agreed that the city had superior title to the two lots at issue here and that are set forth in the purchase agreement.
Right. Thank you. In other words, we went to sell the property and someone claimed to own it-
That's exactly right.
And we said, no, we own it. And he said, no, you don't own it, we own it. And we had to fight that in court for over a year. We own it, by the way.
Yeah.
So that's why I say I appreciate your patience and your investment in, while we were working through that. Thank you. All right, so with that, are there any questions of clarification?
Sure. Jordan, would you mind running through the process from here? So he gets, the developer gets site control and then this will come back through the planning commission for formal action?
That's correct. And this process is called plan unit development. So essentially, there's, there's multiple zoning issues that have to be dealt with and rather than dealing with them piecemeal, essentially what a PUD does, planning unit development for short, PUD combines that all into sort of one streamlined process where it all sort of gets negotiated and litigated out with the planning commission. And so what'll end up happening, they'll go for planning commission for discussion to reintroduce the project and to lay out a framework for what is called a PUD agreement. That agreement will be drafted, staff will work with the developers back and forth, then that'll be submitted to planning commission at a following meeting where they will review the agreement and, and consider whether or not to adopt it. And then once that happens, my understanding is that comes before city council.
Great, thank you. Well, we'll begin to know you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Two questions. I think you mentioned that, Jordan, that you were going to share what the difference in appraisal as far as the appraisal prices. And also, it looks like I'm reading here that the proceeds from the sale would be retained by the economic development department for, can you be specific as to what those purposes would be?
Yes, absolutely. So the first question in terms of the difference between the appraisal and the offer, the appraisal was done by CBRE and that came in at about 150, well, not about, exactly, $150,000 total for both parcels. The offer for both parcels is 106,000, which is, is an increase over the initial offer that the, the developer had come to us with initially. And then the second question in terms of the, the specific uses of the, the proceeds, one of the things that we, we talked about in the department, in addition with the strategic plan and the master plan, is, is resources for small business. You know, the industrial innovation district that we have been talking about, sort of the corridor along Hilton, cultivating resources and attracting tenants for industrial uses to fill those properties. But also challenges such as the previous development project mentioned, attracting local businesses. And there are a lot of challenges and barriers to development. For example, with new developments, they charge higher rents. Typically, only national chains are in a position to make rent guarantees and to have collateral. So finding resources and ways for small independent businesses to overcome those barriers, things like incubator space. And so the reason that none of those are specifically enumerated in the, in the, in the item here is because we wanted to, one, have the opportunity, if we would be approved, to retain these proceeds for that purpose. We'd like to work collaboratively with council, with the incentives committee, and with planning commission to sort of flesh out, you know, based on the master plan, what are some of those priority areas that we can use to create resources for small business. But the general idea is to contribute to a bench of small business entrepreneurs and business owners in the city so that whether you're starting out or if you're going to a second phase, that is another challenge in the city in terms of if you're an entrepreneur, there's a lot of spaces to go into. If you're sort of growing to the second phase, there aren't necessarily spaces or resources for you to make that leap. So that's really what those proceeds would be about, but we wanted, our intent was to work on that collaboratively and before any of those resources were expended, to bring council a proposal to say, this is what we're thinking, this is where we want to go and get your endorsement on that.
So on that point, this might be a minor thing, but I think it might affect the motion. We have an account that we've sort of opened up for the sale of property and we have some ideas about what we want to do with this. And I know we've had discussions about, we might want to use some of that for this purpose, the small business retention. But we haven't fleshed out what that looks like or how much it needs. So I think I would be more comfortable putting it in the account that we've already set up for the sale of property, knowing that you're going to come to us with a plan for possible use, other uses for that money. So instead of, so it's, we're still hanging on to this money, we're dedicating it, we're not going to just put it into the general fund. But for, for purposes of now, I guess I would personally be more comfortable if we just put it in the fund that we've created and then we have the discussion about how you want to use it and how much you need. Does that make sense? Is that a problem at all?
Nope.
I agree with that, especially since the transfer of the money would be at the end of the '16 fiscal year. It seems like you got some time.
Yeah.
So if you come back then, I'd be more comfortable deciding the expenditure that-
Because we are, my expectation is we are going to have that, that broader conversation of what to use with those funds this year. We're crossing our fingers that legislation gets passed that allows us to do what we're thinking about doing with that. So it'll all be part of that and so, if we could. And that might require us to modify the, the motion, but, yeah. Other comments or questions on this?
So I know that we've proven in court that we own the property. Did we ever determine how we came into possession of the property?
Through the chair, one of the, one of the properties was conveyed by the state and I actually think both, both properties were conveyed by the state.
Okay. So we didn't purchase them from?
I think there was a minimal amount of consideration reflected in that deed, but-
Okay.
But not a amount that we would deduct or- not a amount that we would deduct or, we didn't, yeah.
My suggestion would be in the motion is perhaps we deduct the legal costs that we created, you know, through that court case from the sale before we put it into that account.
Do we know what those are? Do we have a sense of?
Let's talk about that for a minute, because the legal cost is more or less the cost to do in business. I mean, and the funding's pooled for now, right? Essentially, yeah, we've got it set aside, but we've got line items for legal costs, which, as far as I know, we're not over by any means. And it just, it feels like another restriction on this money, where I would probably vote for the legal, the amount of the legal costs to be put towards those things, we'd like to have them put towards anyway. So I think it restricts the money we're putting in that fund a little more. So I don't, I don't know that I support that. I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate it. I don't know that I'm there.
Well, my view is if we didn't, if we never owned those properties, we wouldn't have had those legal costs.
True.
So that's where I stand on that.
It's hard to not knowing what those legal costs are, and they are just sort of incorporated into Dan's activities.
Well, I can get you a total, I just don't have that information right now.
I certainly wouldn't want to hold up the sale.
Yeah, I guess what I-
No, I don't want to hold up the sale either.
Right, because I appreciate what you're trying to do, which is we should not be putting into that account expenses that the city incurs for these things.
Exactly. Because if we had purchased the property, then I would have expected the amount that we purchased the property for to be deducted from the sale.
Right. And so I think, I think we could approve this, but it would be helpful to know what those costs are, and then we could, when we're talking about that fund, deduct anything we want to deduct out of it and move it anywhere.
Yeah, I'm absolutely fine with that conversation at that time. Go.
So is your motion?
Sure. I'll move city council resolves to approve the purchase agreement for the sale of 205 and 235 Laverneoye Avenue, city parcels 2533482052 and 2533482035, respectively for $70,057 and $36,576, respectively, a total of $106,000, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the purchase of the agreement and all associated instruments necessary to complete the sale, and for proceeds to go into whatever fund we're holding.
Do we have a name for that fund?
We just put that proceeds to be transferred at the end of the fiscal year and committed into fund balance for future use.
Yeah, what she said.
And actually, it would be fiscal year 2017, I believe.
Is there support?
We don't have a fund.
Thank you for that.
Support.
All right. So moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Any discussion? Any other discussion from the audience or from the council?
Through the chair, I think the 106 that was reflected in the motion, actually, it's not quite right. In the proposed purchase agreement, it's $36,576 as it relates to the parcel ending in 052, and the other purchase amount is $70,059 as it relates to parcel 035.
Instead of 57?
The math doesn't add.
The math?
The math doesn't add.
We got bad math? So it should be 36,576 and 70,059 instead of 057? And Dan would, as a friend of yours-
Sure, I'll accept that as a fund.
Amendment to yours. And Rayland, you're okay with that? All right. We'll change that to $59 instead of 57. All right. Final questions or comments? All right, Sherlin, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted. Good luck. All right. Welcome to Ferndale.
Yes.
All right. Next item of business is call to council. Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community for the police department this evening?
Your Honor, in the spirit of special involvement, I'd like to yield my time to Captain Palazzolo.
All right.
You've heard of them as leadership opportunities.
Captain Palazzolo, anything for the good of the community from the police department?
Howdy again. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the program we piggybacked off Macomb County, the Hope Not Handcuffs.
Yes.
We're the only agency in Oakland County that participated in this. For those that haven't heard of it, we partnered up with a nonprofit, somebody who has any type of substance abuse addiction can walk into our police lobby, no questions asked, drop off a big pill of, or bag of pills that they don't want, we'll take them, and we make a phone call. A representative from the nonprofit will come, meet with them, and get them immediately put into a treatment center or somewhere in the United States. It's pretty cool.
It's really cool.
We started this February 1st, and we've had seven since then.
Outstanding. Seven already.
Seven. We had three this weekend, we had two the second day we opened, and then two more. So it's pretty cool.
Which just goes to show that this primarily opiate addiction is an epidemic in our communities, and we need to look at it in broader than just a law enforcement problem. And so I really congratulate you for bringing that program.
Well, I hope that I could start giving you these numbers instead of our Narcan uses, and then they start to equal out.
Right.
I know Sergeant Brown is really the emphasis behind getting this program started, so he really gets all the kudos for this. We've gotten calls from Oakland County Sheriff's Department, Southfield, Holly, Auburn Hills. I know our county commissioner has met with their board, and we're going to get a meeting together this week preliminarily to get this program started through Oakland County as well. So it's kind of cool that, you know, we started this in Oakland County, and now it's going to move its way west and north, so.
If I may, through the chair, Dick, to clarify, it's, I'm sorry, Greg.
Okay.
It's not just narcotics, though, it's alcohol addiction.
We had one that was an alcoholic, but the rest were opiate addicted.
Yeah, good, I mean, that's right. Go ahead.
I'm curious, can you share if these were members from outside the community, that people from outside of Ferndale are also seeking?
There's both. Both. We've had somebody all the way from Wald Lake that came down here, because they were in Oakland County. We've had folks that live right here in Ferndale. I know Sergeant Brown went out and met with all of our homeless folks at Ayton Woodward and said, hey, here's my card, this is a program we have, walk a mile or two, and you can get help if you want.
Yeah.
We know you need to hit rock bottom before you come in. But I think the word's spreading on the street that there really is no questions asked, come here, and we'll take care of you.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a brief update regarding our recent recruitment for the Parks and Recreation Director. We have extended an offer to Lorena Wheeler, who's currently employed with the City of Detroit. She is scheduled to begin her employment with us on March 13th, and so we're really looking forward to her joining our team. We had a little meet and greet earlier prior to the meeting with our staff, and we're really excited for her to join our team. And we're really thankful that Jill has agreed to kind of stay for a period of time and have a little bit of a transition there as well. So just wanted to let you all know she'll be at our meeting on March 13th.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Jordan, anything else from community development?
No, Mayor, not me.
All right. Got no fire people here tonight, do we?
They were here, you know, Kevin.
Uh-huh.
Chief was out tonight.
Yeah, okay. DPW, anything going on with DPW this evening?
Nothing.
Not, all right, great. Kara, anything from community engagement or communication?
I just have one quick announcement. So we have been looking through some of our stats as we work on our website, and have learned officially that actually one of our biggest drivers to our website is Facebook. We've also just about doubled our Facebook audience on the city's page. So we already knew this, but now it's confirmed that a lot of our residents are on Facebook. They're using it more and more to access information and try to approach us with questions, things like that. So in keeping with that, and in helping to make information easier to access for everybody, we have installed a couple of new apps on our city Facebook page. One is watch a city council meeting. So there's direct access right on our Facebook for anybody who wants to look at minutes, watch a video, go back and watch a previous meeting, just an easier way for people to engage with what's happening with council. And then we also have-
Wouldn't want to do that.
What a great way to spend a night.
Right.
Yeah, that's not-
Works for insomnia, too.
I know.
Jeez. Can't believe that.
You know, we'll see. We'll see when people start using it.
Right.
We also have new direct links right on Facebook to all of our services pages. So people need to find out more about parks, recreation, fire, any of our departments and kind of major programs, they can access it right there. So one step easier.
If I may, through the chair, as my niece constantly reminds me, people our age are ruining Facebook.
Yes.
So are we tracking the other social media traffic?
Yes, we sure are. We find that even though in general, for the age group that seems to be in Ferndale, Instagram and Snapchat should be significantly bigger than it is. We still have a steadily, steadily growing Facebook community here in Ferndale. It's a little bit of an anomaly, actually, but it's great because information is absolutely readily available there and easy for us to engage. But yes, we watch all of the kind of burgeoning apps, as well as Twitter and things that have been around for a little while, and we've got, we're seeing a lot of stasis in most of those, but constant growth in Facebook.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. How about the finance department? Is anything going on in the exciting role of finances?
The buttons are bigger.
Just about, yeah. Parking, any parking issues that you want, you'd like to share with us? Thank you. All right. So Sherlin, I won't ask you if you know what's going on in the clerk's office, you're not working in the clerk's office. Start by saying thank you for being, coming back and filling in so ably for us this evening. It's great to see you.
Well, thank you.
And is there anything you would like to share?
Well, just like to say it's very good to see all of you, too, and just glad that I was available and able to fill in for Marnie and Barb tonight, who have their plates full at the moment.
Us two, thanks. April, I think, for the city manager.
Just a friendly reminder that city hall will be closed on Monday, February 20th, in observance of President's Day, and I do believe that is free parking day as well, and there will be signs on the kiosks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm there, I got it. That's all I have tonight.
Awesome. Dan?
Just an update, there was another quiet title action recently filed against the city regarding a claim as it relates to some property on Leroy. I'm still trying to investigate whether the city actually has an interest in the property or not, but I will provide an update to council on that. That was filed about a week ago.
Oh, Leroy in where? Just curious.
I don't have-
I won't put you on this pod. I just happen to live on Leroy. It's not my house, I hope.
So what you're saying is that-
It's not an isolated, somebody else suggesting they own some property. But there was a reference in the chain of title as it relates to the city of Ferndale, and that's why they had to include the city as a party to the case.
So what you're saying is the net number of people suing us has not gone down?
Not as of today.
Great. All right. Councilman Martin?
The only thing I have is beginning March 1st, and not before March 1st, the Ferndale Community Foundation annual grant cycle will begin, and this is where area nonprofits can apply for micro grants through the Ferndale Community Foundation, up to a dollar amount of $2,500, supporting arts, culture, education, healthcare, whatever your nonprofit serves. The application will be available in a couple places, at our website, www.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org. We always have copies here available at city hall, and as well, or you can give me a call after March 1st at 248-672-4067. And I'll email you one. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilwoman Leaks May?
All righty, a couple things here, so I'll just kind of go down the line. First and foremost, I wanted to thank our police officers for being out there when we had the protests outside of Planned Parenthood. Thank you for having a presence. And I also want to thank the businesses Rouge and New York Bagel for feeding us when we were out there and providing a warm place if we got too cold. So thank you, it went very well, and I just want you, the officers, to know that we appreciate This Wednesday, February 15th, at 5:30 at the Ferndale High School, a Relay for Life fundraiser called Pizza Palooza will be happening. $10 gets you in the door, and you get the chance to sample a variety of pizzas and vote on the best pizzas, and of course, the proceeds would benefit Relay for Life. So if you want to check that out, please do. Let's see. I had the pleasure of attending a meeting recently about FerndaleRadio.com, I'm sure we remember that, the Ferndale Radio. They're still trying to get it going. It looks like August 2017, 2017 could be the startup date if they're able to raise the $5,000, about $5,000 more. There will be a benefit on March 11th at the Ferndale Friends location in Oak Park at 7 o'clock. So they're really working hard to get this going. If you want to support or find out more about it, please go to FerndaleRadio.org. And also, I was told to mention that that is also the Ferndale Friends editor, Stephanie Lovelace's birthday, so it might be a birthday at that time, too. So, let's see.
Two for one.
Yes, two for one. So if you can show up and support, they're really close to getting that, they're really close to getting this started, and if it's not done, if they don't have the funds by March, the end of March 31st, because they need the time in which to get the radio started, if they don't have those funds, then this is probably a wash. So if you can help and contribute, every little bit's help, every little bit helps. Business shout-out. Want to shout-out to Red Allah for being that very affordable restaurant. You can't go in there without running into someone from Ferndale, and the owner, one of the owners, I believe it's Tony, is very gracious and welcoming, and show them some support. Let's see, is that it? That is for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pollocka?
I have one item.